I don't know what's your apartment, you know, streets, I don't know what you. Unless there's.
Yeah, that's.
Monday, June twenty fourth, twenty nineteen, regular session and most of the city council, city all council. One point oh roll call.
We'll start with Crump.
Here.
Kay Smith.
Here.
Matt Card.
Here.
Rod Smith.
Here.
Shaffer.
Here.
Wymer.
Here.
Two point oh, bunch of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Three point oh, motion to approve a minutes from the following meeting, June tenth, twenty nineteen.
So moved.
Second.
First by Rod, second by Rich. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Four point oh, public hearings, four point one, public hearing on proposal to vacate and convey that portion of Cedar Street, south of Cherry Street and north of Vine Street. And all open the public hearing. Have you heard anything from?
I haven't received any comment on this.
Move to close public hearing.
Second.
First by Cody to close the public hearing, second by Betty. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Five point oh, presentations, none, six point oh, pro- proclamations, none. Seven point oh, council action items, seven point one, discussion and possible action on ordinance vacating and conveying that portion of Cedar Street, Vine, south of Cherry Street and north of Vine Street in the city of Anamosa.
Move to approve.
So, second.
First by Rich, second by Cody.
Speaking with Greg. He did not believe there was any utilities in this. Or, uh, yeah, there was no utilities and it's currently, uh, under no easement for utilities. We don't anticipate the need in the future because once it's gone, it's gone.
Right, I, I don't, I'm not aware many utilities are in this right-of-way area. And there would be no reason to place them there in the future.
And this is a roll vote.
We'll start with Kay Smith.
Yes.
Matt Card.
Yes.
Rod Smith.
Yes.
Shaffer.
Yes.
Wymer.
Yes.
I'll say yes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Seven point two, discussion and possible action on ordinance amending chapter twenty-two of the city code library, library board of trustees to reduce term of office of trustees, impose term limits on trustees and stagger appointment of trustees.
Move to approve.
Second.
First by Betty, second by John. Any further discussion?
Um, so, but where are they not staggered now?
They are staggered, but I think it just, they're, they're staggered every two years instead of every year. Because of, or that's how the ordinance currently reads, that they're staggered every two years. So just rest assured.
Cause I wondered how you're gonna stagger them if they're not staggered. So, makes sense to me.
And this two is a roll vote.
We'll start with Matt Card.
Yes.
Rod Smith.
Yes.
Shaffer.
Yes.
Wymer.
Yes.
Crump.
Yes.
And I'm not here.
Kay Smith.
Yes. Sorry Cody.
That's okay.
Seven point three, discussion and possible action on resolution approving the preliminary plat of Chamber Drive Business Park within Meadow Ridge, seventh edition to animal.
Move to approve.
First by Betty.
Second.
Second by Rich.
And this is a preliminary.
Yes.
Tonight's, uh, discussion in a sense is just on the, uh, the business addition of the project and not the overall residential side?
So, yeah, this has nothing to do with residential. It's just that, it's kind of an odd shaped parcel that is being subdivided into three, three parcels.
And this two is.
Will this, I guess Bryce, this would be a question for you if you wouldn't mind. Apologize upfront to bring you to the podium, but I do.
Yeah, go ahead.
Sidewalks, is it part of this preliminary?
Yeah, it's on there.
Is it? The copy we got's pretty small.
There's the.
Fuzzy.
You guys can ask around from, yeah, it's got the sidewalk across all three lots.
Street lights.
Street lights was the second half of the question.
Street lights, I don't know if there's street lights out there right now. That would be part of the street, or I, that would've been part of the street when I went through and I don't know if there's street lights in there or not.
Well, I guess it's my understanding that it was overlooked in the first, what, two phases of the development out there?
Could be, I, this one, this phase was back with, the city put this phase together.
Trying to prevent it being overlooked.
I'd have to work out there, but I mean, if that, when we get to final, basically it's working with the city and Alliance to get lights put up out there, so. I see, I don't remember if they are, cause that was, the city put that extension of Chamber Drive in after they did the trunk line sewer twenty years ago, so. Um, and since then, Humpel would've done the next phase or two of Meadow Ridge. And then we took over when we bought that out, but, so this would've been, I remember this one was a joint project with the city and would've been Carol Humpel and Doug Ripley was when they did that back then, so. I just haven't paid attention if there's street lights out there, I'm in bed by then.
Is that? Is that something you can check into? Cause there are zero street lights in the whole Meadow Ridge.
I know in Meadow Ridge eight there are, cause that was something when we'd go on the ninth, we were hoping to get Alliance to work with that, cause pretty much, I believe Alliance works with the city on the streetlights for most of the town, so.
So maybe this is more of a, our issue at this point than your issue on developing your lot.
Chamber would be, but it's something we can work together, as chamber gets extended, chamber's gonna need street lights down and so if this got missed, we can get them to bring it back down. We find a way, we can just cut an Alliance panel down there at their building and run them off there.
Is that something Jacob, you can work with the development on?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
That, that's all I have Bryce, thank you.
And it, it two is a roll vote.
We'll start with Rod Smith.
Yes.
Shaffer.
Yes.
Wymer.
Yes.
Crump.
Yes.
Kay Smith.
Yes.
Matt Card.
Yes.
Seven point four, discussion and possible action on reappointment of Sandy Anton's to the animals of library board.
Move to approve.
Second.
First by Rich, second by John. All those in favor signify by, I say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Seven point five, discussion and possible action on appointment of Richard Stout to the animals of library board.
Move to approve.
Second.
First by Rich, second by Kay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Eight point oh, public safety, eight point one, motion to approve the renewal of Bear McRice license, none. Eight point two, discussion and possible action to approve the appointments of Robert Young and Jeremiah Snow to the animals voluntary fire department.
Move to approve.
Second.
First by Rich, second by Betty.
Will it be, it's his plan to allow Robert to attend during business hours, uh, if he is called, I guess I'm just looking for clarification.
That's something that we've kind of worked with, we've got other employees there currently on the department. My expectation is that they, uh, understand their job duties in relation to a fire and in some cases, they may have responsibilities that, uh, may take precedent and it's, it's really just gotta be communication from all parties and make sure that, you know, it's, it's no good if they show up in a fire suit and there's no water in the water tower, so in those situations, it's just a communication issue.
Jeremiah as well. He's also an employee.
He is also an employee, but, so yeah, it just depends on their role that they fill, but.
Okay.
But it's just something we communicate between the two departments.
In the past, as a council, we decided upon that. If it was gonna be allowed, uh, so I'm hearing from you Jacob, that it's gonna be a case-by-case basis?
Well, I, I guess it's essentially, yes. Um, I, I don't wanna say any employee can't ever, you know, cer- certain employees can't be on the department or, uh, it's just, you know, there may be some situations where if, uh, I think it's important that we have a water employee, for example, uh, monitoring the water system during a fire, so if there's another water employee that's able to do that, then I would say that water employee's able to respond to the fire. If, if he's the only one though, he really needs to stay and do that, cause it's, it's an important component of, of the situation.
So maybe we could just use common sense.
Yeah, exactly, it's all that is, common sense communicating between the two departments, it's all.
Should be fairly easy, I would imagine.
So it's a non-issue move for, and my thought would be that with these two employees, the council would make a statement that they permit it. I would think at this time you would incorporate it into the statement, uh, or with the decision to accept them as local fire. That we, the city will permit them to leave, or the city does not permit them to leave.
Well, I really don't know, so I've gotta ask, so if there's a fire at night, does somebody go to the water plant to monitor?
I guess I don't know what their typical protocol is, um. It, it depends on the, the, uh.
Is that something?
I'm sure they can, with their SCADA, they would be able to tell what's going on without having to go in, so.
So if they don't have to go in at night and sort of move point at the daytime, right?
They're all sitting here, can we just ask them?
Jim, why don't you come?
Let's come up.
Sorry.
Jim Henson, water superintendent. Years ago, when Larry Driscoll was here and everybody got accustomed to me being on the fire department, other people, we had protocols on what we couldn't, can and can't do. We don't have emergencies every day, but therefore if we did have an emergency and Robert's on a water main break, no, we don't go. If there's a protocol where it's iffy, it's still a point to where we have to do our duty first. So getting out to doing the, like what Dave does right now for the fire department, he goes when he can. There was a situation over on Roland, or, uh, Nassna Street. There was a gas call, well, that's important for the city to know that there's firemen that are gonna be there. Now the firemen have a hard time dealing with people during the day basis because there's not enough people to attend. So, we do make the best cause we can to make sure that they can get out on a call. Now if it's a water main break, we're losing water, it's an emergency, of course they don't go. But, um, other than that, I don't know what the other questions would be, did you have something other, other than that?
No, I was just wanting to make sure that we don't have to address in the future. I'm in favor of allowing them to leave.
I'm sorry.
I'm in favor of allowing them to respond to the fire.
Okay.
I just don't wanna have to address in the future, why one is leaving when we did not verify or validate the decision in council.
Right, yeah, and for us to go out on the fire calls, now roll calls are gonna be different. Um, if you get a roll call that goes out there, it's, it's a decision that has to be made, we're gonna do our duties first, but the fire department is so slacked on employees during the day, they need as many employees as they can and I'm all for it too.
So is there some way that the tower lets you know, once it gets to a certain level?
Yes, I get alarms, I get everything, I, like Cody said, I have a full SCADA program, we are state of the art, and the night that we had the fire here on Main Street, um, I was here, first thing that I heard, I got a call and it was at four thirty in the morning, I was out here throughout the whole day and checking the levels of the tower. We had the fire out on, uh, at Stickles, I was there the whole night. Regulating and getting speeds brought up on our, our pumps, Robert is, now if I, if it was changed around, we, Robert is well aware on how to do that too, so if it came up to a different direction, Robert could do the same thing. So everybody is well trained over at the water plant. Anything else?
I don't think so.
Thanks Jim.
Thanks. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Nine point oh, public works, nine point one, discussion possible action on the record of a verbal warning for wastewater superintendent.
I would like to make the motion to have this stricken from his file immediately.
Second the motion.
First by Rich, second by Cody, let's strike it from the bottom.
I think we're treading on very thin ice with this. Employee issues are the job of the city administrator and once you cross this line, you will have a gamut of city employees that don't like what they're being told, don't like the rubia, don't like that they got fired. You're gonna open a whole big can of worms. I'm against doing this, but it is what it is.
With, with this incident, has there anything changed that has come to light? Jacob, any, is, is there anything that I'm missing that hasn't been brought before us?
I'm not aware of any changes.
So, in, the direction or instructions were given, it was clear, it was understood and they were not carried out. Is that still what went down?
I think that's an accurate summary.
Tom Durden, building owner downtown.
Tom. This is a personnel.
You have it on the agenda, that's the second time you've done that, I, I don't, I don't have a question about him in particular. And you guys are discussing this. My understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding was this was over a news interview that he did with the, with the news. And if, if, if that's correct and I seen that, it was a pretty positive interview. So if this is what it's about, is this some kind of a, rep, or some kind of a, I'm gonna get even, I, I don't, I don't understand that, but like I said, if that's what this is about, that's pretty petty to go after somebody for doing a nu- news interview because maybe somebody was left out? That's my understanding of it Dale, I, that's, that's all I'm saying, cause I, I, the interview, in the interview, it was, I thought it was pretty positive and looked pretty good for Anamosa.
There were things that, and I'm gonna break what I just told you, and I.
I, and I don't expect to talk about, you know, I, I don't, I don't.
There were things that were supposed to be followed but weren't, is why, and that's all I'm gonna say.
Okay, okay, and, and that's, you know, I, I just, like I said, I just wanna clarify, cause that's how I understand it, it was a pretty positive interview for Anamosa, given the bad public publicity we've had in the past year.
Bill Goodman, eight oh four East First Street.
Bill, what are you, are you here for a public comment on that?
Uh, I'm, I'm wanting to know, I have a question about it.
We're not gonna answer any questions, I answered the one for Tom, just because I just thought that I should, but that's it.
Okay, well first of all, this, this issue should never be put in a public forum. Never be put in a public forum. And now that it is, you don't wanna talk about it. And I'm here to tell you upfront that I think all of this is chicken shit. And that's all I gotta say.
Alright.
But everyone around the table, if you don't go along with, with Rich's motion, you should be ashamed of yourselves. And that's all I gotta say.
Thanks Bill.
I think Bill, that the reason it's a public is because the employee requested it. Second of all, I feel we hire a city administrator to handle personnel issues and when direct orders and direction is given to employees and the city administrator feels it needs to be handled the way he needs to handle it, that is the responsibility of the council to back the administrator. It's no different than if a school teacher reprimands a student and then the parent comes in and all of a sudden the parent who's not in the classroom all the time, doesn't see the whole gist of what happened. And you have to at some point trust that the teacher can handle the classroom. We as a city have to believe that the city administrator we have hired is the person who deals with personnel issues. It wouldn't be on the agenda if it wasn't for the personnel wanting it on the agenda.
Respectfully, I know enough about this, I know enough.
If you're not gonna stand at the podium, you're not gonna talk.
When will you go away then?
Respectfully now, I'm gonna, I'm gonna reply to you.
Okay.
I know enough about this matter that I stood up and said what I said and I stand by it.
Okay.
And you were right, that it never should've gotten to this point. However, I'm questioning the city administrator's action on it and calling him for bias. I don't think it's right and I, and I think the council needs to act on it tonight to strike the verbal reprimand from his record. And that's it.
Thank you Bill, I respect your stance.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
Ten point oh, finance, ten point one, discussion and possible action on o, fiscal year twenty twenty collective bargaining agreement with the teamsters.
Um.
Should we table this?
It, it needs to be tabled.
So we'll table that one. Do we go ten two, or?
Yeah, uh, and, and ten two, I, I would just, we would need to modify, we, I would like to modify the resolution to approve everyone except for the police department, I, it's not what I'd like to do, but it's just kind of necessary.
Alright. Ten point two, discussion and possible action on resolution setting salaries for fiscal year twenty nineteen, twenty twenty for appointed officers and employees of the city of Anamosa, Iowa. Establishing an effective date for this resolution, except for the police department. Is that what you?
That, that would be my recommendation.
So moved.
First by Cody.
Second.
Second by John. And this is a roll vote.
We'll start with Shaffer.
Yes.
Wymer.
Yes.
Crump.
Yes.
Kay Smith.
Yes.
Matt Card.
Yes.
Rod Smith.
Yes.
Ten point three, discussion and possible action on resolution approving the hiring and setting salaries of part-time employee for the launch community center for current fiscal year and fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty.
Move to approve.
First by Betty.
Second.
Second by Kay. And it two is a roll vote.
Wymer.
Yes.
Crump.
Yes.
Kay Smith.
Yes.
Matt Card.
Yes.
Rod Smith.
Yes.
Shaffer.
Yes.
Ten point four, discussion and possible action on resolution approving the change in title and wage adjustment for seasonal aqua court employee for twenty nineteen season.
So moved.
Second.
First by Rod, second by Cody. And it two is a roll vote.
Crump.
Yes.
Kay Smith.
Yes.
Matt Card.
Yes.
Rod Smith.
Yes.
Shaffer.
Yes.
Wymer.
Yes.
Ten point five, discussion and possible action on the payment of bill for the month of June twenty nineteen.
Move to approve.
First by Rich.
Well, before I, before I finish that, are we including those two Shaffer plumbing and heating? That were left.
Um, I would.
I move the second before you can just.
Second.
Second by Cody, yes, those two will be added to this list.
Uh, I would like them approved to be, uh, processed as he unchecks essentially.
Okay. So we can amend the list to include those two items?
Sure.
Okay.
You know, it sure would be nice to have some type of identifier as to what each one of these line items were.
I wasn't sure which list you usually get, so I apologize.
No problem.
Would, like which department?
I know this, yeah, this isn't the normal list provided to you, but, uh, we'll try to improve on our next one, um. If you have a specific question, I might be able to tell you what it was.
For, um, Boomerang, was that the Third Street dig? Trying to find the water leak or whatever it is that going on on Third Street?
There's a couple different things, um, I think. There's a couple of different things, um, I think. That did include the East Third Street. It looks like it also included
If you two are gonna talk back in the corner, take it out, okay. Tom?
It looks like it also included some patchwork on, uh, Rosemary and East Third, uh, East Second and Hamilton.
And does that also include the rental of street signs or close signs or whatever?
Yes, it does, yes, it does include the, the rental of those signs that were used on Third Street.
And Streets Department could not provide those signs?
Uh-
So we didn't have to rent them?
I, I guess I can't say if they could or could not, they, they probably could, but-
Well, it might be smart in the future if they do provide them, so we don't have to pay extra for rentals.
I'll look into it further.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Eleven point oh city administrator's report.
Couple updates. We've got five police officer candidates that are scheduled for their second interview later this week. To date, we've received eleven applications for the position of city clerk, the deadline to apply for that position is June thirtieth. Um, last week, um, we determined that the punch list at the water treatment plant was completed. Uh, so liquidated damages are no longer accruing. But, uh, now we'll have to come to terms on what, uh, if any final payment is due, and, uh, in consideration for, for the liquidated damages that have, have accrued since last September. So, it's over, but it's not over. That's all I got.
So we have five for the police department?
We have five candidates for their second interview, yeah, uh-
And to hire three?
We have three open positions.
Three.
Are any of them trained or?
None of them are certified, they'll, they would all have to go through the academy.
Who's doing the interview process?
That is being handled by the chief of police.
Can you give me an update on three ten West Main?
Um, that is being, uh, enforced, it, it was ruled on, uh, as a violation of our, our junk ordinance, and it's being enforced as a, um, contempt of court case, I don't know the exact dates that the, of those proceedings, but-
I agree with Cody, and that's kinda getting out of hand. Is this something we need Adrian in here addressing? Instead of, I mean, I, not that I don't trust what you're saying, but maybe it's time for him to take the hot seat on this one?
I, I can ask if he, you know, I can have him scheduled to be at a meeting.
I mean, I've asked, uh, three, four meetings in a row. I just feel like if, if we're not gonna follow through on nuisance properties, there's no sense in wasting Jeremiah's time with it anymore.
Well, I guess, I, I, you know, don't like a slow timeline, um, I wish things would move faster, uh, frequently. But, uh, I guess I just would say that just because it's moving slow does not mean it's not moving.
Well, it's thirty days we're up in April. It sure seems to me like we have taken our sweet time to do anything with it.
Well, the other part is, should we consider a more aggressive attorney?
Is that a motion?
No, it's not, cause we can't do that.
Maybe that should be on the agenda next week, or next time. That, I brought that up at budget time.
And then seven oh seven, East Second Street, is that?
Maybe more for Jeremiah than you at this point, is that the one that's on the, on the map, on the radar to continue with?
Yes, still monitoring the situation.
Are they making progress or?
Uh, I would say, um, little to none in the last two weeks.
So maybe we can discuss that with Adrian as well, since we're-
And then I've got two questions, different from that. We did not get any department reports this month, is there a reason why?
Um, there, there's no reason why, uh, I guess I will get those collected and distributed to the council.
Okay, and then my second question is, the last meeting we discussed having somebody from the CPA firm here, or getting a new bid on doing expanded audit, and it was not on the agenda, just wondering why?
It, it got, honestly got dropped in the midst of the situation that we're in. I'm still planning to have them at a future agenda, or a future meeting.
Well, if we don't do it soon, they're gonna be here to do the audit, so we need to get it done fast.
Do we need to have a meeting between now and our next one, if we can get somebody on board?
We, we, we will need to have a special meeting, uh, if, may, maybe for other things, but at least for the item of our, uh, union contract and, and police salaries.
So maybe deal with that at the same time?
We can try.
I won't be here.
Okay.
Would you rather that was on the next one then, the city council meeting, the next scheduled one?
I would, I would have liked to have done it tonight.
Right, but now that we can't, let's, should we have on the next one?
So, the next, the next meeting will be the earliest I will be here.
Okay.
Then let's put it when you can be here.
We'll do it then.
We talk in July eight?
Yeah.
Call five oh mayor and council reports on budget information.
I went to the library, the presentation on Normandy on Wednesday, this last Wednesday night was very well done. They have Mary Todd Lincoln coming up on the fourteenth of July, in Sunday afternoon from two to four. It was very well done last year, I would encourage everyone to attend. And they're getting more security cameras at the library hopefully, because folks aren't always behaving down there.
So I, one suggestion for maybe future meetings, since we all have a lot of questions about how things operate in our city, especially as council people not understanding SCADA and operations of our own facilities. Um, possibly one meeting a month, we take a little field trip and visit some of our facilities, so we all have an understanding on how they work.
Good idea.
I think visiting them as a group would be phenomenal.
I'll, uh, I've kinda been considering something if-
Maybe an hour, uh, ahead of time, or a half hour, so we can understand needs and concerns of the department heads of that facility.
I've been considering something in that light, um, and we can look at that further.
And, and especially before budget time, so.
Okay.
Thirteen point oh public with business with accounts on items, not on the agenda.
Tom Durgan, building owner downtown. After the last meeting, I run into Rod downtown here, talked to him for a while, I think we had a fairly good discussion, um, on both sides. I appreciate that. Week ago, today I had a meeting with Jacob. It started off good Jacob. Um, something I completely disagree with, when I had my meeting with Jacob, is, uh, Jacob was good till you got your cellphone out and started texting. I could tell right there, wherever you, whatever was on your phone, you were gone, completely gone. So, I got a question, um, is your handbook the same as the other employees' handbooks for the city of Animosa?
I'm not sure I understand your question.
Do you, do you use the same handbook as everybody else for when you write them up, or you get written up, or somebody gets written up? Is it the same handbook, or do you have a different handbook?
The, the handbook is the same for all employees.
You included. I'm, I'm, I'm just, I'm just, I'm trying to get this in my head here, you have to forgive me, I'm a little slow with this stuff. So, correct me if I'm wrong, a while back, you wrote a, and, and like I said, Jacob, feel free to correct me if I'm wrong, but a while back you wrote a three hundred thousand dollar check last minute for insurance, cause my understanding, the city of Animosa was gonna lose their insurance if it didn't get paid. Was that supposed to be, any checks you write, are they supposed to be approved by the council?
Ye- yes, with the exception of certain hand checks, which there is a policy for.
How could you, cause it was, if, if I understand correctly, it was like the day before it was due. I don't know how something that massive could get by, and quite honestly Jacob, I don't know how you couldn't get written up for that. I, I, you know, and, and don't get me wrong, I'm, I'm just, I'm trying to put this together, because I see a lot of people getting written up, and I hear a lot of this, but there seems to be a lot of behind the scenes stuff, and I don't wanna sit here and pick on you by any means, but it, you know, it kinda seems like I do a lot. But I'm just trying to clarify this, I don't, I don't understand how something that massive could get missed, get written, and you don't get written up for it or somebody, I don't, and, and maybe it was somebody else's fault that's not with us anymore. I don't know, I, like, like I said, correct me if I'm wrong, okay?
If, if the council felt that was appropriate, they have the authority to do so.
Okay, well I know we had a meeting earlier that day, cause I seen a couple of people leaving your office. I'm gonna run a time, probably I can get this, this part out. So, you had a meeting with a couple of city employees Monday morning, and a council member's spouse. And I guess if you didn't spend as much time talking about me and bringing me up in the issue, you might've got a little bit more done, but, I got a new name out of it. I got Animosa, I got a code name from the city van, from some people from the city of Animosa, I'm called the Nat. You know, not the Super Nat, not the Amazing Nat, but I've called the Nat, that's code for Tom Durgan. You don't appear to be a liar to me. So is that true?
I-
That's a yes or no question?
I'm not, uh, commenting-
Okay, I'll, I'll take that as yes. So where do we stand with the Watergate problem?
I'm not, uh-
Trying to sweep it under the rug, or what are we trying to do here?
I'm not trying to sweep anything under the rug.
Have you ordered an investigation yet? Outside the city, uh, police department?
Um, there's really nothing to investigate at this point.
So a partially bypassed water meter is okay? So everybody in this room can partially bypass their water meters and get away with it?
That is not, that is not okay.
Okay, so I guess I'm still kinda confused on why nothing's been done with it, because it was over, yeah, I think it was, um, pretty close to two years ago, when it was first made aware to the outgoing administrator. And then about a year ago it was made to you, so, you know, I, I see some issues here.
If you or anyone else has any, any evidence to the fact of water intentionally-
You've got it, you've got the evidence, you've got the pictures, you've seen it.
If anybody has evidence to that fact, I'd be happy to look at it.
Is there anybody in this room that'd like to speak up to that, um, that has pictures? Oh, guess I'm out of time, thank you very much.
Did he ask if a city employee called him a nat, or a city council person?
I'm not sure what his question was.
Like if it was somebody, I believe he said, was it somebody from the city that called him a nat? I don't believe anyone from the city called you a nat.
It wasn't per se someone from the city at the time, because they went in as a, I'll say civilian. My five minutes, I'm sorry, I'm here talking.
Fourteen oh German. Oh, sorry.
Um, Leanna Boone, the Animosa Chamber in hometown pride, I just wanna say, since the last meeting, um, the nodes have been done, so thank you guys for stepping out, um, with the cooperation of the Streets Department, the prison crew, the warden, the guards. Um, we got everything done, and looks better, I think.
Yes, they look very good, thank you for your work.
I do have a question though.
Yes, yes.
Is there a plan to move the chambers back to a place where it's more accessible to those of us who are old and have difficulty with stairs?
Um, eventually we'd all like to get back together, um, I'm not gonna sure, I'm not sure what the plan is yet.
Okay.
I'm gonna talk to the other groups, so eventually that's the plan.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Tim Shada, I represent the fire department, and tonight and two weeks ago, we were supposed to be on the agenda for discussion of our building addition, and it wasn't, uh, was it been two weeks ago Mike? That we met up there at the station, two weeks ago, three weeks ago?
Three weeks ago, June.
Uh, we met up at the station with Jacob, Sean Jensen, and Jerry Rogers, and that was in concern of this, uh, retaining wall that your engineers think that we need, and according to Sean and Jerry, um, the way this building is gonna be built, according to their plan, does it need a retaining wall? It's gonna be on a four foot foundation, or a four foot with it, with the two foot footing, and the wall's gonna be staggered as it comes from east to west, starting out at four foot, and then ending up at twelve foot. And the two of them have already talked with an engineer, and they don't feel that it's necessary. Uh, they both feel that it's cost, gonna cost the city a considerable amount more than what the two original bids I've already gotten from those gentlemen. Can I pick on you?
Go for it.
Have you, uh, I heard you've kinda- I've heard you've kinda got your fingers into this with, with some thoughts.
Um, do I gotta stand up?
Please join us, please.
What's that?
Please join us.
Um, no, I went up this weekend and looked at the fire station site as well, and naturally we do a lot of these projects all over eastern Iowa, so get in a lot of the public work and such with that. The site itself lends, with some extra foundation work is being set, lends itself to building relatively economically. There's a little bit of work that needs to be done with that wall. So I think the plan all in all is good, um, not knowing, I haven't seen the bids yet or anything or planned for sure, but we looked at a few things and come up with some ideas, and so basically like the excavation side of it, um- And, so basically, like the excavation side of it, um, all in all, the project that they're, from a city standpoint, you do have to have some sort of an engineer look at the project, just because of the dollar amount. I assume it's gonna be over a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
Yes.
So at that point, you do run into some concern there, where you do have to have an engineer, uh, my suggestion would be, from what I've seen of a lot of these buildings, is, I wa- I see a lot of cities, our school districts have bid out bus barns, our small towns have built out, bid out city shops and such. And instead of using, like when you look at Schneider and Associates, both Kelly and Lindsay are top-notch, super sharp with what they do, but their projects are normally multimillion-dollar projects to where that's what their skill sets are built for. A lot of these type of projects, you'll find a smaller firm to do a simple site plan, and then they'll use the engineer of the building to actually, that'll actually be the slack as you spec the building through the building designer. So then Commander, or, um, Star, or whatever building manufacturers wanna submit a bid with the contractor, and it's generally not that many, you normally have your contractors in the buildings they sell. But that person will design the building and design the foundation as part of selling the building. But it keeps the cost a lot more in check compared to trying to design the building to be bid. So instead of spending, you know, fifty, sixty, seventy thousand on a design, you should be able to find someone in that five to ten bracket that'll put this type of plan together, put it out more in a local bid situation, and get your local people bidding on the, that unfortunately, I mean, you have to do, I mean, that's the world we live in. I, I don't argue with the public bid market, because without, you know, municipal bids the way they were, we wouldn't have a fair shake in every other town in the community, so. But, uh, I think it can be done a lot, I think it's a fairly simple project. And I did mention to, uh, I dropped an email to Jacob about, uh, I was gonna give him a couple of names of people that I'd seen that had done those more simple bidding packet plans. But that was after I went out there Saturday morning, when it was supposed to be raining, and I decided to have an office morning. So after that, we went out to look at it, and kind of got a good idea for what it is. There's a couple of guys, like, say, I'll get Jacob the name for, but I think you can, the project, I don't think is gonna be, I think you can put it together without really affecting the budget that Tim and the guys have put together. And, uh, you know, and from what I see of the project, as far as grading for it and stuff, it was something I even mentioned that we would look at donating the excavation and grading around the place for the fire department, so I think, and they've got some other donated supplies, so I think it's, it's a very community-oriented project. So I think there's probably some technicalities, you know, through the, through getting the stamp, and just the things the city has to do legally, but I have some contacts through work that we can get that out, and I think get some stuff moving here, so you can get this project to go.
Okay.
So.
Uh, uh, the.
Thanks, Bryce.
The builder that I've been dealing with, Sean Jensen, um, the package that, that he looked at, I don't know where, where he went to, but it's already been engineered for this site, to match, to match the building, the rest of the building that's already there. Uh, I guess my question now is, the step we haven't taken yet is to get a complete, a complete plan and layout of what's gonna be needed up there, from the very first shovel of dirt, to lighting, electrical, plumbing, furnaces, and whatever else may be into that. Is, is that something that I should get put together and turned in to you guys? So you've got a better idea of where we're sitting?
For the whole project, or what?
If, my suggestion would be, once, once you guys select who's gonna put the bid packet together, they should help write that description with your assistance.
Okay, and.
The person that's putting the package together with the building and everything should figure out the electrical, the heating, plumbing, and all that, and then, you know, because then it's like.
If there's stuff you're gonna do in-house.
Yes.
Keep that out of it.
Yes.
But just the general spec of what you need to bid for legal matters, I don't think you're really looking to build a complete set of a whole building plan. Unless you are looking to get it all done in one package, but if you're basically looking to get the shell up, so you can work in it, work within the parameters.
No, it, it, unli- unless we get city employees up there, uh, our, my firemen don't have the ability or the time.
Right.
So I, I was looking for a finished product.
Then I think one of these guys will basically be a combination of just, generally, these plans are pretty generically laid out. And it'll, you'll put an electric schematic on a outline sketch, heating and air specifications. And then, once you get into these, a building like that, the parameters, the unit types, what you're looking for from the HVAC, the electrical, the amount of outlets, all that stuff that'll come out, you'll specify how you want it laid out, and then they'll put the notes in that plan set. And then, like I say, that engineer typically won't design the building per se, that'll still get left to Commander, or whatever building. And basically, those specs are normally open to whoever, whatever contractor pulls on the building. Because, then they just, then once the thing's bid, that comes as a submittal. That way, the city's not paying someone to engineer the building itself, and then it'll all save the costs there.
So who is this, this person or this group that I need to be with?
Um, that has to be selected yet, but, like I say, I'll get Jacob a couple of names of some guys that are in there. Like I say, you can use Schneider for it too, it's just Schneider I know has got plenty of work to do on this. Where they willing, I'm sure they would, I mean, then they sell, and you have a wonderful plan, but I don't know if they, if they have the time to mess with it really, and if you have the money to pay for that scale of a drawing. But.
No matter what we do, do I understand that? We have to come up with what we want, and then it has to go up for public bid, right? We can't just be picking people.
Once you're over that threshold, I mean.
We can't be picking this person and picking that.
We have to hire an engineer to draw up the specifications and submit the, submit it out for bid, so that.
So I, I need to sit down with a particular engineer?
We, we need to contact, uh, I mean, my understanding is, council, you are not satisfied with the materials we received from Snyder, so we probably need to get a second opinion, or multiple other opinions, and determine which engineer we do wanna work with to draw up those specifications and oversee the bidding process.
And most of the time when you're talking to, when you select the engineer, work with the engineer, the consultant, however you're setting up. When you talk to them, build your timeline with them. That way, everybody's on the same understanding of, okay, if you, if you're who we're working with, you know, in four weeks, I wanna be here, you know, what is your timeline? That way, everybody has clear expectations, and then it runs through the line properly, and you're not disappointed in someone. You don't wanna sign a contract to someone without the expectation, and then all of a sudden, three months later, they're like, oh, we're working on it.
Yeah.
You know, that just adds to frustration.
So how do we move on from this point, then?
We will get in contact with a couple other engineers. I know you have one recommended from Sean, I'll take Bryce's recommendation, we'll figure out which one we prefer.
If Sean has a civil, or, you know, a coordinating engineer, Sean does a really good job, so.
Yeah.
If he knows someone.
Yeah, he's, he's already had somebody that, that he's dealt with, yes.
He's an excellent guy.
So we can start working that way.
So, once again, where, where does it go from, from tonight? I mean, is.
To me, you're asking valid questions.
And I'm just, I'm just saying this, because, because I've been working on this for like three years now.
If I can finish.
Yeah, I'm sorry, sure, go ahead.
Your questions are valid, they sh- I'm, I'm wondering why you haven't sat with Jacob and mapped this all out, because that's the two entities that should be putting all this together, you and Jacob. And then you, then he brings it to the council through an agenda item, and you will review it again. You're, a very good discussion, don't get me wrong, but I believe that should be occurring in Jacob's office.
I've asked that before, uh, quite a few months ago, and I was told we're not at that point yet.
Well, it sounds like today.
But I feel, I feel we are.
So, schedule an appointment to sit down in Jacob's office?
Look, I mean, scheduling appointments is, uh, well and good, but our follow-through was piss poor.
But have you got stuff?
At best, we've asked for things on the agenda, we're not getting them on the agenda. We asked for an audit, uh, to meet with those people, I've asked for, uh, properties that are months and months behind.
I agree, and I'm just saying, let's follow through, Cody, like, let's get Adrian in the hot seat. Let's figure out what you need, let's push it. I mean, you're here, I'm saying what he needs, let's figure it out.
Basically, I, what I could see we need is for me to bring what,
You have.
what plans I have to his office with an engineer.
Right.
And say, this is, this is all the further I've been able to get, what do we need to do?
Before you walk in with an engineer, I think you need to talk to him about the different engineers you're gonna pick from. I don't think you just go grab an engineer and come to him.
I, I understand your frustr- frustration.
I do too.
Because I know you'll set up another appointment with Jacob, and it'll go nearly nowhere.
And that, that has to stop.
And, and I, as I understand.
Cody, I guess I don't, I, I don't know where that's coming from, and I understand your frustration with, with the things.
Where it's coming from, look at the last, uh, watching the last meetings, we ask the same stuff over and over and over again, and we get nowhere with it. This, that has to stop, we have to see some progress. We're just, we're in the mud, we're spinning our wheels.
I will take all, you know, any, any due blame for, for my faults, but at the same time, I would appreciate from, from public and the councils some consideration for the events that, that have taken place and that affect my schedule. And, uh, um, I, I apologize to you and the fire department.
Yes, you did, yes, you did.
For not moving forward, uh, as fast as I would like. Trust me, I have no reason to, to delay this for any reason. Um, I do feel like we've worked together when we get the time to meet.
Yes, we have.
And I do think we make progress when we meet. Again, uh, I think we can make contact with an engineer, get an idea if, if we wanna engage with that engineer for this project. And, and if we do, we bring that to this, to this body, they approve, approve moving forward with having specifications drawn up, and, and start the bidding process.
I would.
If you're, if you're open to that, we.
I would like to get this rolling this week yet.
Okay, we'll, we'll meet this week.
Make some phone calls, uh, if I've gotta make, make an appointment through my job to be here, then that's what I wanna start doing.
We'll make it work, so that we can meet this week and make some progress.
Okay, I got one other question for you, my original plans, have you seen them yet?
I, I have not, but, um, I'll follow up again.
Really like to have those back.
I'll follow up again on that.
Okay. Yes.
Jacob, I did a quick Google search a while back when I asked about the grant, and a quick Google search, I found four, but it's over my head, I don't understand how they are, I don't know if you checked into that or not? But there was some grants for fire departments?
We've got, Mike found two different places. Um, of possible grants for money for public entity, entity buildings. So I guess when, when we have, Jacob and I have this meeting, I'll just bring it with me then.
Perfect.
Then we'll move forward, hopefully this week yet, we'll move forward.
Tim, this is a, I mean, I don't know where the building's going, just a quick question, is it going into where the sign?
Are you done, Tim?
I am, yes, thank you.
Thank you.
You know, can I just say, is, is the, is the building going, we're near the sign, or is it going to the back of the lot?
No, it's going to the south end, to the west.
There's about five yards of concrete under that sign.
Yeah, no, it's going to the south end of the building to the west.
Fourteen oh adjournment.
Some moves.
Second.
First by Cody, second by Rich, all those in favor, send a five by saying aye.
Aye.